That would be me. This was last week, Thursday. The highlights include the supplemental appropriations to the Building Improvement Fund for capital improvements, cash transfers from the General Fund to the Building Improvement Fund, cash transfers from the General Fund to the Family First Council and Volunteer Guardianship Program, cash transfers from the Public Assistance Fund to the General Fund for building lease payments. Incumbrances were placed for various Water Resources 2015 service contracts. There's encumbrance for the Subco Wellness Grant and a travel request for Recorder's Office. Vouchers include a payment to InterSource for $12,000 for the update of the E911 system and a payment to Lakeland Management in the amount of $130,690 for progress payment number five on the new County Engineer Office facility. Nothing for you on this report yet. Any questions?
Yeah.
Do we need to read that?
No, there's no action for me to stay down.
Okay.
Should we do it together or you want to do it separately?
Let's do it off here.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting in January 29, 2015. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting on February 3, 2015. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the special meeting on February 12, 2015.
Don't move.
Commissioner, please.
Aye.
Commissioner, please.
You can't do any resolutions.
Financial for today include the cash transfers from the Children's Services Fund to the Public Assistance Fund, cash transfer from various accounts to the Service Rotary Fund, National Water Stream Group, travel request for the Javi Family Services and Juvenal Popeye Court, payment of $20,107 to the Javi County Ever Cultural Society to reimburse the maintenance project from the Community Development Grant Fund, payments of $29,860 for maintenance to Keystone U.S. for video recording.
Questions, Karen?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-019, itemizing the financials for the meeting of February 17, 2015.
Don't move.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Thank you. We have a sign.
I think that's fine.
Commissioner.
Can you turn it on?
Yeah. Good thing. Think about Jessica. Department of Aging's next up. Jessica. Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning.
Trouble getting here this morning?
Nope.
I had dreams clogged up this morning, frozen.
Well, I have a rental car because my car kind of froze to death in my driveway yesterday. So, other than the ability to drive a car not four-wheel drive, that was my only issue today. So, we have Mary Ann Deech, our Home Delivered Meals Coordinator. She is retiring. She moved with her son, Michael.
There you go. Is it too loud?
Is that better? I don't know. Mary Ann Deech, our Home Delivered Meals Coordinator, she is retiring. Upon thinking ahead and replacing her, I took a deeper look at the job description and did some revisions with the job description. Our Home Delivered Meals Coordinator, they manage over 100 volunteers as it is, so it only seems to make sense that I would add in their job description that they also be the volunteer coordinator since they are coordinating the placement and the training of many of the volunteers. So, that's what I came to today to revise this position moving forward.
It's not really changing, not hiring anybody, it's just changing the job description.
Well, we are going to be, that's the next, we're going to be posting this because she is retiring, so moving forward when we hire someone, this will be added into their job description.
So, do you want to do the section seven? Jessica? The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and revise job title and description for the position of Home Delivered Meals and Volunteer Coordinator Number 1010. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Full-Time Home Delivered Meals and Volunteer Coordinator Number 1010. This position will remain posted until filled.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
The next is, once again, we're just, with Sandy McLeod in place as the Senior Center Supervisor, we were able to look at some job descriptions that they are working with and found some inaccuracies and outdated things in the job description, as well as some of the requirements were a little off as well. So, we just did a revision of the Site Coordinator position and Assistant Site Coordinator position.
So, that's eight and nine?
Yes.
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the revised job description for the position of Site Coordinator Number 1004. The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve the revised job description for the position of Assistant Site Coordinator Number 1005.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
And the next is, we are encouraging our site coordinators to have a little bit increased responsibility. They've been given budgets to work with. In that being said, they're going to be responsible for shopping for a lot of their programs, so we wanted to add them on our Giant Eagle card so that they themselves can work with their budget and make purchases as needed for their programs.
Any questions, Karen?
The Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the application for authorization to commit use of County Card Card for Personal Policy 7.11 Form ORC 301.27 to include David Craig, Melissa Barash, Kathy Delaney, Kathy Hart, Becky O'Reilly, Peggy Peters, Mary Ann Van Pelt, Teddy Wallace, Amber Weinhardt, and Mickey Krueger on the PNC Giant Eagle Grocery Card for a three-month amount limit of $1,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Just waiting a few minutes. Give me a call, I want to talk to you about the conference and the audit processes.
Okay, I can speak with Chris Anstel if you'd like as well.
You have somebody from the other side?
Yeah.
Welcome. Hi, how are you?
Good morning.
Okay, yeah.
I have two contracts. The first one, I'm asking to be approved just for Allied and Botec for the maintenance of our microphone reader printer.
Okay.
And the second one is for Blue Technologies for the maintenance agreement on our office photocopyer.
Okay, and this is standard?
Standard, yes, absolutely nothing.
Yep, in a way, what we need, uh, well, we both have to sign the, uh, the contract agreement on them and then on the blue, I don't know, he's supposed to sign on the bottom. You both have to sign the agreement and then the second maintenance.
I sign on the yellow ones, he signs on the blue ones?
No. Fortunately, no.
Make it easy.
He has extra work to do.
Yeah, just put a little sticker on there, skip, please.
The Archives and Record Center is requesting the Board approve and execute a contract agreement with Allied and Botec Corporation and further approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the equipment maintenance agreement renewal for the maintenance of the Record Center Microphone Reader Printer for a one-year period in the amount of $895. The Archives and Record Center is requesting the Board approve and execute a contract agreement with Blue Technologies and further approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute an initial disservice agreement for the annual maintenance of the Record Center Copier for a one-year period in the amount of $700.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
How are you?
Hi.
Good morning.
How are you?
This is just a request to fill a position that was vacated at the first of the year and we need to fill it now.
Okay.
So, it's not a new position or money or anything.
I think you, uh, mostly you just put it in the paper and.
I don't do it. Personnel doesn't. So, I, you know, I know it goes to like Javi Family and Lakeland and all those kinds of places and then it's in the national team.
The County Home is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Part-Time Attendant Number 1504-1 Third Shift. This position will remain presidential filled.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings.
How are you?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you? This is just a request to fill a position that was vacant at the first of the year and we need to fill it now.
Okay.
So, it's not a new position or money or anything.
I think you, uh, mostly you just put it in the paper and.
I don't do it. Personnel doesn't. So, I, you know, I know it goes to like Javi Family and Lakeland and all those kinds of places and then it's in the national team.
The County Home is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for the position of Part-Time Attendant Number 1504-1 Third Shift. This position will remain presidential filled.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen. Go sit down, man. You're up.
No, I got way down on the list.
You are way down on the list, you're just late.
But Toronto was.
I thought you guys would talk longer, you know?
She gets the thing.
I'll start it anyway so we can.
It's too cold.
It is too cold. You started or you started? Oh, I started, okay. Um, this was when we lost our part-time shelter attendant. She went to, she moved to Arizona, which is great for her and all that. She's our girl. Exactly. Got to go down there soon. But we, we interviewed our, the people that were there and Carla Jones, she lives in Camden, is, was a great applicant and we're going to hire her as long as she passes the drug test and the background check and all that. She seems very great and loves animals and all that and wants to work with the animals, so.
The Doc Warden is requesting the Board approve hiring Carla Jones for the position of Part-Time Shelter Attendant Number 1607 to be effective February 23, 2015 at a rate of $10.47 per hour. After a successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.20 per hour.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Wow, quick board. How do you?
I'm holding that.
Take care.
See ya. Now I gotta get you early for that one.
Morning.
Morning, Shane.
Good morning, how are you this morning?
What you got?
We have the resurfacing of Rapids Road Sections D through F in Troy and Burton Townships from 422 to the Burton Village Line. This is the final resolution to order the plans, approve specifications, and set the bid dates for March 11 at 2:00 p.m.
Okay. Any questions, Karen?
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution Number 15-0202 to order the improvement of Rapids Road CH1 Sections D through F in Troy and Burton Townships. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the title sheet of the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution says a bid opening will be held on Wednesday, March 11, 2015 at 2:00 p.m. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on February 19, 2015 and on the county website.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Okay. We'll make sure it gets in the paper on Thursday and I'll give the.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Gentlemen.
Morning, how are you?
How are you doing? You two good guys?
Morning.
Good morning. Morning. We've got two items before you this morning. The first is, we have an opportunity for another JAG grant, just a assistance grant like we were here for last time. This one's a little bit smaller and this one allows us to use for the match money from our Law Enforcement Trust account, which, I'll be recollect, is an account where the proceeds of criminal activity, when we seize that, go into this account, one of the formidable expenditures is equipment. So, the first one is that grant and that local max on that law enforcement stuff.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Office of Criminal Justice Services JAG LE Grant 2014 JG LE 5108 Standard Assurances and Free Board Conditions for MDT Replacements in the amount of $7,535.20, $6,781.68 from the Office of Criminal Justice Services, and $735.52 for the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Trust Fund. This grant is for the period February 1, 2015 through August 3, 2015.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
The second item we have, as I mentioned earlier, the Law Enforcement Trust account. There are actually two types of those, the one being the local one, the Law Enforcement Trust account, the second is a federal one. When we partner an investigation, narcotic work through DEA, et cetera, any seizures from that are required to be directed to a separate Law Enforcement Trust account so we can meet the audit requirements, et cetera, as we expend that. So, this would be the agreement for the certification for 2014, allowing us to continue that practice. So, this is, this is interesting. So, when you confiscate whatever the goods are with the situation, then, then the proceeds for, the proceeds for that go into some sort of an account? Do you share that account with the federal government? That's, it's shared with participating agencies. So, for example, if we did a joint investigation, us, perhaps Lake County, any other entity, and because of interstate transactions, DEA was involved, as an example, then that money, we still get our share goes into this account. And who manages that account? We do. Who decides which, who gets what part of the share? It's usually specified upfront, can include a prosecutor's office as well, his dad spend time. It's based on level of participation. If we were to initiate the investigation, well, the investigation occurred here, example might be the Newbury one, can you recall that large rate? Certainly, most of that would come here, but there was a portion of that that did tie and link to California, so you have some interstate activities as well. So, there's a federal umbrella over top of this, though. It's probably guided by federal law in terms of how distribution. This is all ours, though. We don't divide any of this. This is all our share. This is ours. And this is how we spend it, that's what this record. If you could put a bookmark in that, I'd like to talk to you more about this share contribution. Sure.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the annual federal equitable sharing agreement certification effective for 2014.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Keep any question? Morning. What does MDT stand for?
Mobile Data Terminals. Those are computers utilized in our vehicle.
Okay, I kind of surmised that, but figured that was too simple.
Sure.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, gentlemen. Stay warm. Yeah, stay warm out there. Putting a second sweater on, mid. Good morning. Hi, Jerry, how are you?
Good.
Hi, sweetie.
Having luck getting the, last year we had a lot of issues when it got really cold with our vacuum systems, but this, you know, we did a complete reevaluation of the systems and, you know, some maintenance, regular maintenance in that over the, in the fall and the summer last year and so far getting. We've been pretty, like, pretty good with the vacuum systems this year.
Wow. There's a lot of people closing pipes and stuff.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the, with our vacuum systems, that's our, that's our shower sewers, those are about four feet deep, so. Those are the ones that can freeze up, ones, sewers. Sewers are, are good and then our water line's six feet deep, so.
Kind of get real cold with no cover for that, it freezes.
Right. Okay, what do you got? Uh, first item here is our Thompson, is our Thompson Project, it's a change order increase of $35,192.20 for some electrical changes, building modifications. We, the electrical changes actually were brought on by CDI when we went to them with what was originally designed and approved by CDI. They came back with about a $50,000 bill for us to put in their transformers and things like that. If they did that on their, on their pole instead of at the building, we weren't going to get charged that $50,000, so we're now making adjustments to the electrical, to, instead of having all the electric at the, at the building, it's now being done at the pole, so we have to run additional line in different, in different work, so. The building modifications include, included a new addition of a sump for groundwater de-watering to, to our vacuum system and that was a result of the new location of the plant. We, when they were digging, when they were digging that, that hole, they were having a lot of groundwater infiltration there, so we added a sump into there and then the, what we found on some of our other properties, we've had, we've had the metal roofs and we've had the cleats put on those, and what we've been finding is those aren't seeming to work as well with the snow, so we're doing a different, you know, snow guards and that on the, on around the roofs. The, these are the additions of one in the original project.
So, when, when the project was brought, first brought up, did CEI not, was it not involved in the?
They're, they're involved in it, but they don't give, they won't give you a cost until you actually are applying for the permits and, you know, and giving you the electrical service.
Really?
Then they tell you what the costs will be.
Absolutely. There's always a surprise with them.
They'll review the plans and they'll say, yeah, this looks good, this is okay with us, we don't have any issue with the way you have, you have it out, but once you apply, that's when they come back and they, then they do all their internal engineering and that's when they come back and go, well, that's going to be 20,000 or 10,000, in this case, it's like 2,000.
Originally, were the transformers at the?
Everything was going to be at the building. Now they're putting it on the poles, but now we have different underground electric and different, um, bigger lines and that that have to run from the pole to the building instead of.
Yeah, why would they?
Because it would, it would be off of the, it would not be on their poles and in their closer.
So, they would have to pay for the wiring to the transformer?
Well, that's where the, that's where they're coming up with the 50,000 would be the, you know, the, their cost of installing transformers at the building and.
It's just not that far off the street, right?
Uh, it's actually about, the building's about 150 feet off the street, so.
That's not, that's nothing.
Yeah. But it had to do with everything being, with all, all of CEI's equipment basically being at the building as opposed to being on the pole.
And which do you think is the right way to do it?
Um, either way is fine and, you know, I understand CEI's desire to have it on their poles, but it was just kind of a, it was a decision that was made that it seemed that way everything would be inside, inside our fence line. Now it'll be getting, it's up on the pole, so it's not that, it's not an issue with safety or anything like that, but it was just a matter of having everything closer to the building.
They're still running all the wires underground?
Yes.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute change order number one and increase the contract paid with Environmental Construction Incorporated for the Thompson Township sewer project for electrical changes for remodelations and testing for the new wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $35,199.20.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
And the next item is another one of our annual service contracts. This one is with Ienaro Contracting for excavating services. Right now, we're, we're asking for it to be open at 20,000. Based on past history with, with Ienaro, he's usually pretty, he's the one we use a lot when we need it because he does a very good job and he can take that at inexpensive costs. We start giving him quotes for the, in the past, we used about 50% of that, but we're doing a lot more in-house with a lot of our service contracts, so, you know, more of only, we, we tend to only use these service contracts when it's something that we don't have the equipment for, or don't have the manpower for because we're doing it the other way.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Romano Ienaro Contracting Incorporated to perform excavating services at various locations for the year 2015 in the Mountain Ocho City $70,000.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
And the next item is another one of our annual service contracts. This one is with Ienaro Contracting for excavating services. Right now, we're, we're asking for it to be open at 20,000. Based on past history with, with Ienaro, he's usually pretty, he's the one we use a lot when we need it because he does a very good job and he can take that at inexpensive costs. We start giving him quotes for the, in the past, we used about 50% of that, but we're doing a lot more in-house with a lot of our service contracts, so, you know, more of only, we, we tend to only use these service contracts when it's something that we don't have the equipment for, or don't have the manpower for because we're doing it the other way.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Romano Ienaro Contracting Incorporated to perform excavating services at various locations for the year 2015 in the Mountain Ocho City $70,000.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Great, thanks, Jerry. Yeah, I'll explain this one. The Commissioner's Hiring Authority, we have a policy that states that you cannot accrue more than 200 hours of vacation if you're, based on how you earn your vacation and newer employees accrue at a slower rate than employees that have been here longer. But to be fair to everybody, after a couple of iterations, the Board decided a couple of years ago upon a policy that says, once you get to 200 hours, if you haven't taken your vacation, you start losing that time above 200 hours, which you can never have more than 200 hours worth of vacation in the bank. We've had a situation before with the Building Department and it's arisen again where their workload is such that people can't take vacation without us falling behind on doing permitting and all that. So, within the policy that you've established for the $200 hour max, you have the discretion if you so choose to waive that policy for a department for a period of time if there's a situation where the, the tempo of activity is such that they can't take vacation without things falling behind. So, we're, here we're asking for you to temporarily suspend the 200 hour maximum for the Building Department until the open position that was created with the vacant or the departure of an employee here a couple of weeks ago. So, we would assume this will probably be for a couple of months until they get somebody in here. Once they have the new employee to replace the individual or left, we'll put the policy back in place.
So, primarily, this is because we're short a person?
Correct.
And, and the others have to work five hours and you can't take big decisions?
Correct.
If they're put, they'll be vegan.
We, we fall rather behind.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve the suspension of the 200 hour maximum accrual for vacation for the Building Department until the open position is built in accordance with JAV County Personnel Policy and Procedure, vacationally effective February 17, 2015.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board to skirt with Mountain Hill Township Trust needs and not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by MIS Pioneer LLC Doing Business As Pioneer Water Land located at 10661 Kyle Road Garden, CTRFO 5626330.
Don't move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very well, thank you. I have a revised version of this based on our conversation earlier today. Commissioner Claypool requested that for purposes of consistency that one word be changed in the proposed policy. That's the one in red at the bottom and then I noted above it in red to show the consistency that was requested. Mr. Claypool requested that for purposes of consistency, that one word be changed in the proposed policy. That's the one in red at the bottom, and then I noted above it in red to show the consistency that was requested. The reason that we're addressing this policy is that we did some tweaks to it last November, and it caused a lot of issues for some of our 24-hour operations, and then the department heads came back and talked to us about what would work better for them, and this reflects that. We had made it so that people who worked on holidays would receive overtime, but for purposes of computing overtime compensation, we weren't going to allow them to use holidays that they didn't actually work. And what we were told by the department heads is that it would be better if we flipped that and let those federal holidays continue to be used for compensation.
Calculation overtime.
Calculations, let that sick and vacation time, because they're more discretionary, not be used for purposes of calculating overtime. An example would be if somebody took three days off and then they came in on Thursday and worked over a couple hours to catch up, then they would want overtime for that, which, you know, their vacation time is somewhat discretionary, and theoretically you should be able to work around that in your ordinary workday. And so what we did was, we actually took most of the language from the part that's called overtime, out of the CCAO Model Policy Manual, just tweaked it a little bit for what we wanted to do, and we have flipped it back to where holidays are going to be used for compensation, overtime compensation calculations, but sick vacation and paid and unpaid time, which will cover the paid days off that the commissioners occasionally grant, will not be used for calculation of overtime compensation. So, and I ran it past the department heads that are affected this time and made sure that it, what it says is going to work better for them, because they were having trouble filling necessary slots, just because people were disgruntled about the holiday calculation being removed. So, this is our fix for that.
Okay. I don't have any questions, I just have a bit of time looking over this, and you and I talked about it at length, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any questions?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve the revised overtime capitatory time policy in the JAG County Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual to be effective February 15, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Claypool.
Thank you.
She's going to be joining us in...
It's all right with you guys, that's fine.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the discipline of a public employee in the Transit Department.
Why, Mike Casper joining us?
And Karen DeCola, the hearing officer.
Yes.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool.
We expect action when we return, we will.
You will?
Is that how you need them?
Yes, because you're going to do the, bring me the paper.
9:50.
Actually, we don't need to sign it, it's not enough hours. The order in the novel is not necessary. And we can get rid of?
Yes.
The bottom part?
Yes.
You returned that, what time is that? 10:58?
9:50.
All right, 9:50, sorry.
Hour early, as they were saying. Oh, for me.
The Transit Department is requesting the board accept the disciplinary recommendation of the hearing officer Karen DeCola and to suspend without pay Jack Lingman, full-time transit driver in the Transit Department for eight hours, one workday for violation of Transit Policy Manual, Pages 10, Best Practices Preventable Accidents Level Two, Sides White.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner. Aye.
Mr. Claypool.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe day out there.
Thanks.
I went in the stair, too. This is the pile that you should have to sign on, this is the pile that you opened.
Okay, so we can get this wrapped up and close the meeting, and then I'll go about signing, opportunity to sign. So acknowledgement, do we need to do the acknowledgements?
They're just on there, you don't have to read them, they don't need to.
I'm looking at any acknowledgements, I don't see anything, people can't read themselves. Upcoming meeting, upcoming meetings on the 20th, there's going to be a NACA Transit Council Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Meeting, and there's going to be a lot of excited people there. Monday, the 23rd, the Family First Council, at the mental health offices. Tuesday, the 24th, the Commissioner's been holding a recession. Thursday, the 26th, we're going to hold a regular session. And Friday, the 27th, NACA Finance Audit Governance and the Executive Committees, they're meeting in Cleveland. And that's it. So, anybody have any questions? If not, we're going to move to adjourn, and I second. Aye, aye.
Okay. And I expect to sign.